I'd like to go ahead and call the April 28, 2008, meeting of the Salina City Commission to Order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Vaneer.
Here.
Commissioner Jolka.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Purney.
Here.
I'd like to invite everyone to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Have the citizens form a time when citizens can come before the commission to discuss anything that's not on the official agenda. Is anyone in the audience today? Seeing none, we'll go on to words and proclamations.
The week of May 5 through the 11, 2008, as Building Safety Week 2008 in the city of Salina, Donnie Mars, Building Advisory Board Chairman, will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Building Safety Week 2008, May 5 through the 11. Whereas, through our continuing efforts to address critical safety issues in the building environment that affect our citizens, regardless of age or occupation, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, we are confident that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, and others in the construction industry work year-round to ensure the safe construction and maintenance of buildings. And whereas, the dedicated members of the International Code Council develop and implement the highest-quality codes to protect Americans in the buildings where we live, work, play, and learn. And whereas, the international codes, the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the nation, are used by most US cities, counties, and states, these model building safety codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, and earthquakes. And whereas, Building Safety Week, sponsored by the International Code Council, reminds the public about their critical role of our community's largest unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who help prevent countless fires and accidents. And whereas, the theme "Building Safety Where You Live, Work, and Play" encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety, sustainable buildings, pools, spas, and hot tub safety, and new technology in the construction industry. It presents appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that places where we live, work, and play and learn are safe, and the countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas, this year, as we observe Building Safety Week, we ask the citizens of our community to consider projects that will improve building and fire safety at home and in the community, to reflect on the values of building and fire codes that we often take for granted, and to acknowledge the essential services provided to all of us by the local building safety and fire prevention officials in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that May 5 through the 11, 2008, is Building Safety Week in the city of Salina. Accordingly, our citizens are encouraged to join the communities across the state and America to participate in Building Safety Week recognition. Signed and sealed this 28th day of April in the year of 2008 by John K. Vaneer II, Mayor of the city of Salina.
Don, are there any activities during the week?
Yes. I think building services -- Mike Roberts, give a little rundown as far as what they're planning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. In addition to having posters distributed to the schools, which we normally do as an activity for Building Safety Week each year, as well as pamphlets to those schools entitled "Careers in Code Enforcement," we are also this year -- tomorrow, we will be on Kansas Live promoting Building Safety Week. Tomorrow afternoon, we'll be taping a segment for Strictly Salina with Mr. Darrell Bixby, who is a member of the State Board of the Home Builders Association and also a member of our local building advisory board. And then next week, for the first time, we will be having open houses on the evenings of Tuesday and Thursday evening to invite the public to come into our offices for a meet-and-greet, to meet our staff, and find out how friendly they really are, to have an opportunity to see the place where we work. We're going to be having refreshments and door prizes. As a matter of fact, some of our local retailers have donated gift cards for door prizes to help promote Building Safety Week with us this week. And we also will be giving out a lot of good informational handouts for our citizens about local codes and do-it-yourself projects. And so we're really excited about providing this service next week.
Great. Thank you. Don, I have a copy of that.
The week of April 27 through May 3, 2008, as National Volunteer Week in the city of Salina, Nancy Klostermeyer, the Volunteer Connection Director, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. Proclamation of the city of Salina, Kansas. Whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot provide for all of our human needs, and whereas individuals, having discovered their power to make a difference, are at the center of positive community change, and whereas all residents of our community can inspire others as well as take personal action to change conditions in our area, and whereas volunteers can connect with a myriad of local community service opportunities through the Volunteer Connection. And whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers both the giver and the recipient, and whereas during this week, all over our community, volunteer service will continue to be performed, and volunteers will receive special recognition for their commitment to service. And whereas our city's volunteer service is a great resource and treasure, now therefore, I, John K. Vaneer II, Mayor, do hereby proclaim April 27 through May 3, 2008, as National Volunteer Week in Salina, Kansas, and urge my fellow citizens to volunteer and be part of the change in our community. Both by volunteering and by recognizing those who serve, we can enhance the well-being of our community and its citizens. Signed this 28th day of April, 2008, John K. Vaneer II, Mayor.
Could you share with us some of the activities you have planned?
Well, certainly. We got a bit of a head start and kicked off National Volunteer Week with our Clean the River Serv-a-thon on Saturday. There is a special supplement in today's paper honoring volunteers by several of the local entities that utilize volunteers, as well as the Volunteer Connection. There are a number of volunteer recognition activities and other media coverage that will be happening through the week, and so I urge everyone to watch for those opportunities to honor our volunteers. We at the Volunteer Connection are pretty much going to be carrying on business as usual and matching volunteers and needs, so take advantage of the opportunity to come visit us and connect with an opportunity.
Well, thank you for all you do, and I have a signed copy of the proclamation for you.
Thank you.
There are no public hearings, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 21, 2008. Item 6.2, resolution number 08-6513, authorizing a renewal agreement with Wilson &amp; Company Engineers and Architects for on-call engineering services in an amount not to exceed $17,207.25. Item 6.3, authorizing staff to accept the tentative national endowment for the arts grant for Salina Street City's temporary installation project.
Are there any items anyone would like pulled from the consent agenda?
I have one question about 6.2.
Okay.
What is the Lane report review?
That is in reference to the well study that Lane did for our 15 downtown groundwater wells. I ask Wilson &amp; Company to review it for any technical issues that they might notice so we could comment back to Lane for corrections.
Okay. Thank you.
No other comments? Bring it back for action.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Developmental business.
Item 7.1, acceptance of offered easement right-of-way and restricted access dedications and authorize the mayor to sign the replat of the Lambert's addition. Item 7.1A, acceptance of the public storm drainage easement dedication. Item 7.1B, acceptance of a no-build easement dedication.
Mr. Hobbie, is this yours or?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we have for you tonight the replat of the Lambert's addition. As we're getting ready for the construction of the Coles facility, we've been working with them this afternoon to come up with several ideas and thoughts. The main issue today is the fact that we have some easements we'd like to dedicate, as well as get the mayor's signature for a replat. As you know, that the owner and the developer of the subdivision must present to each one of us, the city staff, a proposal for a new replat of this area of Lambert's addition, which consists of about 10.79 acres. It is located along South 9th Street, just south of what we call the Midstates Plaza. Along with the plat that went through the City Planning Commission and approved on April 15 at their work-study session, included several technical conditions, and you have those technical conditions outlined before you in the blue sheets today. And one of them is the replat has been filed and designated with these following items. First of all, there's a break of access on 9th Street, on South 9th, going into Key Street, going into the property. A vacation of a 40-foot frontage road which lies along the east-west side, excuse me, of South 9th Street. The revised drainage study to meet the city's subdivision drainage criteria, as well as identification of the floodplain boundary. There's also a dedication of drainage and utility easements in the public street right-of-way. There's also been required a variance for a street curve radius on the L intersection of Planet and Key Streets, as well as access rights to Midstates property and subdivision of the lots. There's also a detention pond maintenance that is also required. As we go through the process and look at this plat and replat of the property, there are several things that we want to bring to your attention. First of all, the street access and design. Due to the plating arrangements on Belmont Plaza addition, the construction of Fazoli's and Subway Restaurant, there's no prospect for extending the frontage road adjacent to 9th Street. Therefore, we ask for the vacation of that frontage road area. As proposed in a primary street access, the replat area would be to extend Key Avenue from 9th Street West to the property -- into the property, excuse me. Key Avenue would then be a public street 55 feet wide of right-of-way and line up with the end of, or the western, excuse me, the southern end of Planet Avenue, forming an L intersection. It'll be extended northward Planet Avenue from Key Street to line up now with the Belmont Plaza addition as existing right-of-way. There's a 29-foot street that has been accessed in there. Access to all the lots would be internally. There will be no access to any of the lots on South 9th Street. They'll either be accessed on Key or Planet Avenue. The lot design is being shown as three platted lots, one of 5.77 acres, one for Coles, a second directly to the south of Coles, and the third will be a frontage or outlots on the east side of Planet Avenue along 9th Street. There's no specific minimum square footage in each one of the lots required by the city planning position. Public utilities and services. There's a 12-inch water main located along the west side of 9th Street, which will supply adequate and capable water for the domestic use within this facility. There is no issues we come up as far as the water issues are concerned. There is a network of 6-inch public water lines that will be processed through the building lots, and there is a sanitary sewer. It has changed from a public sewer to a private sewer system as we work through the process. The manholes along Belmont Plaza sewer system are only four feet deep, and therefore, the developers, engineers proposing to extend an 8-inch private sewer line along the west side of 9th Street up to an 8-inch private line that serves Midstate Plaza. So they'll be working with a sewer line that will be a private sewer line through this project. Electricity, Westar indicates there's a development to this subdivision could be served by existing overhead power lines. Natural gas also is sent along 9th Street and can be served by Kansas Gas without any major extensions. There's fire protection within the area, and there'll be additional fire protection as the units or as the structures are being built. Fire units will utilize a new onsite fire hydrants and sprinkler system within the public water mains. Storm drainage seems to be the biggest issue with the whole project, the storm drain and storm sewers. The city engineer is performing the -- has informed, excuse me, the planning commission in writing that defects that propose this subdivision on the existing storm drainage system are based above a drainage report. That drainage report was approved by the planning commission as well as the city engineer. The location of that drainage area, as you noticed, will be along Interstate 70, as well as both north and south property lines. We will ask today for your dedication of those drainage easements, with general requirements to be improved for a water course way, as well as drainage way, and a channel or a stream to allow drainage easements that were installed along with the Midstates Plaza drainage system area. When these proposed drainage systems will carry water across adjacent private lands outside the subdivision, appropriate drainage rights must be secured, and therefore, today we ask for those to be secured also. The engineers' report proposed a storm drainage system that allows a 48-inch concrete storm pipe that will carry runoff from 9th Street over to the proposed detention area. There are off-site easements, excuse me, that will be required also. As you noticed today, we've asked you to do a no-build easement along Midstates Plaza. This will be ensure that there is a 60-foot area north of Coles' north wall in order to keep -- for a no-build area that allows there no construction to be in that area. There must be split between the Coles property as well as Midstate property. There's a 25-foot no-build easement that ensures on Midstates property will be no building constructed. The city -- the compliance with the comprehensive plan has been met as far as the city planning commission is concerned, and the dedication of easements and right-aways are asked to be accepted today. The planning commission action on April 15, the planning commission's presentation of staff report, comments from developers, design engineers, and comments and questions of commissioners, the planning commission voted eight to zero to approve the replat of Lambert's addition, with subject to the technical corrections that are on your blue sheets here today. Design for plans will need to propose public street and water line extensions needed to serve a subdivision will be approved by the city engineer, and required public improvements shall be installed or sufficient financial guarantees to place assuring the completion prior to the insurance of a building permit for this area. An all-weather emergency access road and an operational water system must be in place prior to the beginning of the vertical construction of the property. The owner developer of this subdivision must submit for approval of the city engineer complete construction plans and storm sewer piping along the south boundary line and the stormwater detention pond, as well as inlet and outlet structures. The owner developer of this subdivision shall execute and record maintenance agreements for private covenants, providing for the maintenance of the pond area, as well as any inlets, ditches, or outlets. All required off-site easements must be executed and recorded prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy located within this subdivision. We ask that you will proceed with a motion to accept the offered easements, right-of-way, and restricted area dedications, and authorize the mayor to sign the Lambert's addition replat, respectfully submitted by our absent zoning administrator.
Questions of staff?
On the plat site plan, which I know is not necessarily critical, it sort of indicates that there's -- could be access between -- over to Midstate Mall between Capitol Federal Building and the Ashley Furniture Building. Is that in or is that out? Are you going to be able to cross from one shopping center to the other?
I think we're going to tag team you, if that's okay. That is contemplated as part of the development agreement, and there is a traffic study that's being conducted as part of the development agreement, and the development agreement then provides alternatives depending on the outcome of that traffic study. So there still remains the possibility of cross-access across the Midstate Mall, depending on the results of the traffic study. This plat doesn't provide -- it precludes vehicular access until we get that issue resolved and we sign off on the proposed configuration across the Midstate property.
So potentially, there could be an amendment to this to make Planet dead-end into?
Yes.
Or continue through Midstate even?
Right. What's before you today is actually the plat, and the items that you're addressing are site plan items. But yes, potentially, the configuration of the site plan could change as a result of the conclusion of the traffic study.
And similarly on Lot 1, similarly, because it's a future matter, I guess, Lot 1, Block 2, the outlots, the front lots, that originally was shown in site plans as having maybe four separate businesses. So is there a prospect that at some point, they'll come back and amend it to cut that lot into multiple lots?
Yeah, one of two things. It could have multiple buildings on it that are handled in a lease arrangement, or they may come back, and that would be at the developer's discretion if they wish to divide them up into separate lots. But the intention remains to have multiple businesses on that Lot 1, Block 2.
Okay. So we're just -- but the drainage easements cover those regardless of whether that ends up being four or five lots or remains as one?
That's correct.
I had one question. There's some kind of a little bit confusing from the planning commission meeting. The blue sheet states that the proposed pond design does not meet the city's design criteria in three areas, and they go on to suggest potential problem with utility easements. Anyway, the planning commission, they were asked about that, staffs asked about that, and they said, "Well, yeah, it doesn't meet our criteria, but go ahead and accept it anyway." It was kind of confusing if that's a potential big problem or not.
Between the planning commission meeting and today's meeting, there's been considerable review and interaction with the developer and their design firm, and we've concluded that the proposed design that you have before you is acceptable. They've also been in contact with Westar about some of the concerns about overlapping utility easement and drainage easement in the proposed configuration of the detention pond berm relative to the location of the power poles. And so we feel like we've got all those issues resolved.
Okay. Any other questions? Public comment? I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I guess the first motion would be to accept the offered easement, the right-of-way and restricted access dedications, and authorize the mayor to sign the Lambert's addition replat. I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the offered easement, right-of-way and restricted access dedications, and authorize the mayor to sign the replat of the Lambert's addition. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes 5-0.
Item 8.1, second reading, ordinance number 08-10,444.
Do we need three motions on that?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Hobbie, we need to come back to you.
Mr. Mayor, yes, sir. The second item we have tonight is acceptance of the public storm drainage system dedication on Lot 1, Block 1 of Midstates Plaza addition to accommodate a public storm sewer extension. A drainage study prepared by Jason Muller, P.E., as part of the proposed plat of the Lambert's addition concluded that a discharge point was needed for an off-site and onsite runoff that is going to be stored in proposed pond along the west side of the property if it's going to function as a detention area or detention basin. The preferred discharge point is the Magnolia Ditch on the north side of Magnolia, which also receives site runoff from Midstates Plaza. Because the existing storm drainage system serving Midstates Plaza does not have sufficient capacity to accommodate the runoff from Midtherm and Lambert's property, Mr. Muller proposed the construction of bypass storm sewer line that would be constructed at the rear of Midstate Plaza to carry a pond discharge to the Magnolia Road ditch. This is a 36-inch pipeline that expands to 48 inches further north, which would be designed, financed, and constructed as part of the development of the replat of the Lambert's addition. However, it'd be turned over to the city as a public storm sewer upon the completion of the final inspections. We'd ask that you accept the offered off-site easement dedication for the Lambert's addition.
Questions of staff? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission?
Mayor, I'd move we accept the public storm drainage easement dedication on Lot 1, Block 1 of the Midstates Plaza addition to accommodate a public storm sewer extension.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept a public storm drainage easement dedication, Lot 1, Block 1 of the Midstate Plaza addition. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes 5-0.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, with final action on the Lambert's addition replat tonight would be the acceptance of a no-build easement dedicated on Lot 1, Block 1 of Midstates Plaza addition to create a 25-foot no-build zone on Midstates property north of the Lambert's addition. As proposed by the Coles Department Store, the Lambert's addition contains 63,493 square feet. In order for this proposed building to be designed and built under the unlimited area provisions, which allow them to reduce some of the building code requirements from the International Building Code, a minimum of a 60-foot clear-spaced area should be maintained around the building. Midstates Plaza, as well as Coles Department Store, has worked together to come up with a 60-foot area to allow a no-build area. This includes, excuse me, a 25-foot no-build easement that'll be restricted on future buildings in the area on the Midstates Plaza. We'd ask that you will accept the offered off-site easement dedication on behalf of the city.
Questions of staff? Public comment? Bring it back to the commission?
Mayor, I move that we accept the offered off-site easement dedication on Lot 1, Block 1 of the Midstate Plaza.
Okay, it's been moved that we accept the no-build easement dedication. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
I didn't know that we had a second. Second.
I'm sorry.
It's a silent second down.
We had a bet up here how long this meeting would take. A little bit of a hurry, I'm sorry.
You've got 10 minutes, John.
Items of administration?
Item 8.1, second reading, ordinance number 08-10,444, amending section 42-65 of the Salina Code pertaining to landscaping regulations by implementing zero-scaping in commercial landscaped areas.
This ordinance was passed on first reading, April 24, 2008, and since then, no comments have been received. Is there any additional public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission?
Mayor, I'd move we adopt ordinance number 08-10,444 on second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 08-10,444 on second reading. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jolka.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Mayor Vaneer.
Aye. Passes 5-0.
Item 8.2, authorized purchase for one heavy rescue truck and high-pressure pump and foam unit.
Chief Mulliken.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Larry Mulliken, your fire chief, and I'm joined this afternoon by Battalion Chief Scott Abker. And what we have before you, it culminates about a year of work on the part of the fire department. Chief Abker chaired a committee of fire personnel involving fire engineer Dave Turner, Captain Linderman, and Captain Solden, to name a few, that worked on specifications for a new heavy rescue truck. As you know, this rescue, Rescue One, that we operate, is a highly specialized piece of equipment that goes out and generally responds to auto accidents and other types of specialized rescue situations. to use hydraulic rescue tools and other types of confined space, types of equipment to save people's lives during very critical times. Our current rescue truck is a 1989 model. It's going to be 20 years old here shortly. And so we started this work, and the money was budgeted in CIP for this truck replacement. At the culmination of the bid specification development process, which I say was pretty lengthy because they took a lot of pains to look at some highly complicated piece of equipment and how they, pieces of equipment that would, how they would work together and produce the best, the best truck. We went out for bid, we posted it on our city website, we advertised it in the paper three times. We sent out electronic notifications, and we sent out invitations to bid to bidders that don't normally, that we have contact with. Out of that, we received three bids. We received one from Conrad Fire Equipment, one from Hayes Fire Equipment, and one from Murphy's Fire Equipment. The one from Murphy's, which was a Rescue One, heavy rescue, was disqualified from the process due to the fact that their bid bond came in a day late. They did not have the bid bond in there at the time, and we consulted the city attorney at that time and looked at what the situation was. And they, we had the recommendation or the, at least the advice of council, to not consider that bid since it did not meet our specifications, to have the bid bond in with the bid. So we were left with Conrad Fire Equipment and Hayes Fire Equipment, which essentially is a Pierce heavy-duty rescue and a Rosenbauer heavy-duty rescue. When the committee received these, we did not have a lot of, a lot of experience with the Rosenbauer. Honestly, we have some Pierce units that have served us very well over the years, and our personnel really like Pierce. And so the task of this group that Scott was head of was to go out and look at the Rosenbauer unit. Would it fulfill our needs, our wants and wishes and desires with a new heavy rescue? Dave Turner made numerous contacts. He called six or eight departments, asked them how, what their experience was with this truck, what were their, were there likes, dislikes, things of that nature, all the way down to, I believe it was Fort Worth he called in, like 30 Rosenbauer engines in operation down in Fort Worth, and they said that they would probably buy nothing else in the future other than a Rosenbauer. So us not having any experience with an actual Rosenbauer unit gave us some comfort with that unit. That would be a high-quality truck for our needs and fulfill our purposes. When we looked at the cost of the units, you can see on the, on the commission report that the Pierce base bid was $509,073, and with a discount of $74,96, and producing a net bid of $501,577. And the Rosenbauer was $466, with a discount of $76,73, leaving 458,558.40. The discounts are primarily due to chassis prepayments. These custom fire apparatus dealers buy chassis, cabs and chassis, and they build the trucks. And if we pay for the cabin chassis upfront, we essentially get a discount for doing that, which is a good use of funds and certainly saves some money down the road. One of the things that they wanted to look at was the addition of a high-pressure foam system, high-pressure pump and foam system to this unit. It, in a given situation, it may not have pumper support, fire engine support along with it, and would have a need possibly to lay down a foam blanket or have some type of fire suppression capability of its own. And so they, they put that in the bid as an option to see what that system would cost in addition to it. And you see there on the report that the Pierce unit was $21,174 for the high-pressure pump and foam system, and Hayes Fire Equipment for the Rosenbauer was $16,785. With that, they looked at the total bids, and their recommendation was to go, was to proceed, to recommend to the commission to buy the Rosenbauer unit, taking advantage of the $7,673 chassis discount, and believing a final cost of $458,555.40. One of the things that, that caused us some real concern in this was the fact that this truck was, was actually budgeted for two years ago in the CIP program at $450,000. We exceeded that $450,000 by approximately $25,340. If we would have adjusted for normal inflation at the $450,000 two years ago, we would certainly have been close to $500,000 because they escalated anywhere from at least 8% to 10% a year on, on customized fire equipment. So it's unfortunate that we were a little bit short of our bid, or a little bit short of the budgeted money by $25,000. But there is some, some additional funding in the CIP program to make up that difference. And so with the help of finance, they were able to allocate the funding to make up that $25,000 shortfall. So, so with that, we wanted to bring this to the commission for consideration tonight, and let's see if you have any questions along that line or what have you. And like I say, Chief Abker is here. If we have any specific questions for the committee or the process or what have you.
Questions?
Do we current, excuse me, do we currently have a heavy rescue truck?
Yes, we do. It's a 1989, yes, it's a 1989 model.
Are you retiring it and replacing it for this, or will we have two?
Well, Scott, why don't you come up here? Because he's, he manages our apparatus replacement program and...
We have two rescue trucks. One is at Station 4 that is for some specialty rescue. What will happen with that truck will be, that truck will be retired. This rescue truck that has been serving us this '89 will go to that location. That truck is manned as an either-or type of situation. When it's needed, staff is pulled from that, from another vehicle to staff the second rescue truck. So the, the primary rescue truck is Rescue One, and that is the one that's being replaced with this truck.
So, so we'll have two? We, we've always had two?
And we currently have two, that's correct.
When you get rid, or when you retire the older one, do you sell it? Do you trade it in? How does that work?
If it's possible to trade it, that's, we will evaluate which direction is going to be the best, whether we will trade or whether we would sell that outright.
Because these are some expensive trucks.
Yes, they are.
They're, they're very expensive. And I'll tell you one of the, one of the dimensions to this that Scott deals with, and that's the reason I wanted him to come, come up and, and talk about these issues of truck rotations and things like that. We have two American La France fire trucks. And at least two, is there more than two?
Two.
Just two? We have two American La France fire trucks. Well, American La France is an apparatus manufacturer filed for bankruptcy. And what that means is, is that the parts availability for these American La France trucks will become less and less. Unless, unless somebody buys American La France or it makes a comeback or something along that line, we're going to be pushed in the corner of having apparatus in which it will not be easy for us to find repair and replacement parts for. So that's one of the things that Scott deals with on a regular basis, is how this equipment's going to be rotated out. And it's not necessarily connected with this, but it's something that, that we look at in that apparatus rotation.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other questions?
Pardon me?
That, that same question that...
My question is on the unit that we do have, does it have a high-pressure pump and a foam system?
No.
No, sir, it has a conventional PTO-style pump as opposed to the newer generation high-pressure foam and, and pump system.
So we got along okay with what we had, and this is a step up, or...
This is a step up. The current rescue truck does not have that foam capability nor the ability to lay down a protective blanket of foam without considerable effort to introduce foam into the system. And so this is a far better opportunity and safer operation.
This is, this is actually neurotechnology. This is neurotechnology than what we have on the old truck.
Well, in the past 20 years, not having that, has that caused a problem?
Well, I don't know, I can't, I can't speak to that.
Can, cannot think of any specific situation where that, off the top of my head, where that has been a big concern. Certainly, anytime we have an automobile accident or any other type of accident that involves flammable liquids, it's a, it's a concern for us that we are able to deal with that effectively. And with this system, we are more prepared and better able to take care of that should that situation arise.
I can, I can tell you this, Mayor, that from my own experience when I was in Stillwater, we had a car accident that occurred on the east side of town. The rescue there is much like our rescue here, was the first on scene without pumper support. They get there, they have somebody trapped in the car, they have a fire burning, much like this system here that they have on their current rescue truck. They pulled that system to try and suppress the fire, and they could not do that, they couldn't get it done. And that, that victim essentially burnt to death in that car, and until they got an engine there to actually put the, put the fire out. And that caused a major uproar in the community to think that the fire department did not have a, a system on their rescue that could suppress a fire in a car fire that they know they go to. And that's why these systems are in those, in those things. And this is a newer technology with, with more capability and provides, I think, a greater safety to the fire, firefighters and people trapped in vehicles.
Well, this is kind of a no-win situation. I'm, I understand your concern, but I'm also not a fan of, of, I guess, taking out one pocket into another to, to come up with a shortfall, so... A little bit of a dilemma.
I had another quick question. Hayes Fire Equipment, is that of Hayes, Kansas? Is it a in-state? I take it it's Hayes, but I wasn't sure.
It's a dealership here in Kansas, yes.
I would mention that this high-pressure foam system was evaluated. Ebeling Fire Department has one, is highly regarded by their department. We were pretty skeptical at first when we first began researching this system. We explored those options, we went and looked, experienced how quickly it was effective in extinguishing a vehicle on fire, very effective in extinguishing some tires that were on fire, and it was very impressive in terms of its ability versus just a regular hose line in water.
Scott, what kind of, to kind of simplify that, if you had the same situation, you had a truck with the traditional, or the old truck versus a new truck and the new technology with the foam, what's, what's the real impact of having that new truck? How, for example, time-wise, what does it gain you from a rescue and fire suppression perspective?
Certainly, the immediacy of putting that pump system and foam system into service versus only having water to utilize for a fire suppression system on, on our current rescue vehicle. The effect of this high-pressure system coupled with the foam is so effective in separating and breaking that bond for the chemical chain reaction for fire that just is really amazing in how well that works. If I've answered your question or...
Well, it also, it also gets to what Jason's talking about, too, is as you go up in pressure, high-pressure units generally use less water. You know, waters that are higher pressure, therefore you get a more effective use of the water.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, as far as the, the time it takes to do what you need to do, which would be to put out the fire and rescue someone, how much time do you really gain using the new system? Do you gain, you know, five minutes, 10 minutes of time? How, is there any way you can gauge that?
It's very difficult to gauge. Every extrication and rescue would be different. I do know from experience, we've had some extrications where we've had some vehicle fires there where you're, you're in the process of trying to extricate and get the victim out, and you're using fire extinguishers or, you know, manpower is very limited in those situations where this is a one-switch-type operation. You're utilizing one individual to manage that. It's just more efficient and better use of your resources that are on scene. As far as addressing the amount of time that it saves, I really can't say that, and every situation would be different.
You mentioned Ebeling has this technology with, I assume, a new apparatus. Is this pretty commonplace today? Are you seeing that most organizations, when they replace the apparatus, are going with this?
I've seen quite a few. I'm not, I wouldn't say that it is the most common practice at this point yet, but I do believe that there will be a move towards that. It is, like I say, much more effective in its ability and ease of use. I think that there will be more.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? I'll bring it back to the commission for action then.
Mayor Vaneer, I move we authorize the purchase of one heavy rescue truck and high-pressure pump and foam unit to Hayes Fire Equipment in the amount of $475,340.40.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the purchase of one heavy rescue truck and high-pressure pump and foam system for $475,340.40. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passes 5-0.
Item 8.3, certification of final costs for 2007 special assessment projects and set May 12, 2008, as a special assessment public hearing, public hearing date.
Mayor and commissioners, the final certification of costs have been filed by the engineering division with the following public improvement projects constructed in 2007. Sanitary sewer improvements in 200 block of Des Moines Avenue, sanitary sewer improvements for Schilling, Ohio, and Waterwell, Quail Meadows Estate, Phase 3, Liberty Edition, Number 2, Phase 1, Golden Eagles Estates Edition, Phase 4, or, excuse me, Number 4, Phase 3, Magnolia Hills Estates, Phase 2, and Glen Avenue Sanitary Sewer. The property owner's share of this comes to $2,497,368.48. The city's share comes to $78,629.94. Total cost, $2,575,998.42. The schedule that we have listed below outlines the public hearing date of May 12. The May 19 date is the second reading. First reading is also on May 12. The May 22 date, we are publishing the assessment ordinance and the distribution of the final assessment statement to property owners, which begins the prepayment period. June 23 is the 30-day prepayment period, that will expire. And then on July 14 is the bond sale. Staff recommends the city commission set May 12, 2008, as a special assessment hearing date, and instruct the city clerk to publish a public, a notice of public hearing and mail a notice to each of the property owners in the benefit district. I'd be happy to try to answer your questions.
Questions of staff? And you're just asking us to set the public hearing date today, correct?
Correct.
Any public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action?
Mayor, I'd move we set May 12, 2008, as the special assessment hearing date and instruct the city clerk to publish a notice of public hearing and mail a notice to each property owner in the benefit district.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to set May 12, 2008, as a special assessment hearing date and instruct the city clerk to publish a notice of public hearing and mail a notice to each property owner in the benefit district. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passes 5-0.
Mayor, I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 15 minutes in order to discuss with the city attorney a matter subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion could waive the privilege and jeopardize the city's position in the matter, and discuss a matter involving non-elected city personnel for the reason that public discussion of the matter would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected city personnel involved. And reconvene in this room at 5:05.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. Do you anticipate any action?
No, I don't.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? We're in executive session.